I would like to declare the council meeting open, the last one for this calendar year. And welcome and yes, keep your woo-hoo's down a little. I would like to acknowledge our opening. And also, the prayer of council will be read by the Reverend Paul Melsie-Jouk. I apologise for saying your name incorrectly. Liverpool Baptist Church. And if you could all be upstanding, and that will be followed by the National Anthem.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabragaw, clan of the Durrug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrug and Durrug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city, and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors, and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The sovereign Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have once again of meeting in these council chambers. We thank you for this great blessed country of Australia, and for the privilege that we have in living here. We thank you especially for the city of Liverpool, and all who call this place home, and pray for her peace in the streets and in our homes. In this season of Christmas, we are reminded of the fact that you entered our world and bore our skin. We are reminded also of your words, "It is more blessed to give than to receive." Enable us to be truly thankful in receiving, and gracious and generous in our giving. We pray for the mayor and councillors who have been elected to lead our city and placed in authority over us. We also pray that you would bless their families and loved ones. We pray that the deliberations within these chambers would be honouring to you, and that good and just decisions always be made. That in these days of much uncertainty, these men and women will lead us by word and example. That you will impart them with divine wisdom when difficult decisions need to be made. That they will make the right ones in the present, and prepare and plan for the future, for the good of our whole community. And we pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. If you can be sent in. I have a leave of absence from councillor Chitty. If we any other apologies? Okay, I'll put the leave of absence. Those in favour, those against, the carried. Next item, condolences. None. Confirmation of the minutes?
Who's that? Why, thank you.
I have a query.
Yes, councillor.
Page 14, I think.
Yep.
Just the wording of that is... Is it 14? I don't think it's 14. Bear with me. Forty, not 14, forty.
It had a four in it.
Close.
Yes.
Just the wording of the motion that was passed, the English is not goodly. That council incorporate the following issues, comma, but not limited to, comma, and factors into... Could we make that sound better by moving it? That council incorporate the following issues and factors, but not limited to?
So you're correcting the actual grammar of the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a bit annoying.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, councillors. Can I also speak to an amendment we need to make to the minutes? You will have received an email from Mr Jajarkis circulated on the 10th of December, advising that we accidentally admitted point 1D of the NOM 08. We've listened to the tapes and got the correct wording back, and we've suggested that you adopt the minutes with that correction in them.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
No, I'm happy to second the minutes with those amendments.
Any discussion? I'll put it, those against, those for, carried. Thank you. Declaraions of interest? None. Public forum? We have a couple of speakers. Our first speaker is Miss Sue Weatherley, on behalf of the Partridge Community Association, and she'll address council on EGR04 Middleton Grange. Thank you. Next item is Mayor Minnitts. Unfortunately, we have two. The first one is titled Parking Filing Concessions. Correspondence has been received from the Honourable Dominic Perrottot, I think that's how you say it, Treasurer and Minister of Industrial Relations, on the 4th of December, advising that in June 2018, the New South Wales Government announced plans to allow the options for council to change lower parking fees, and from $80, to $80 instead of $112. At present, parking fines in New South Wales are much higher than any other cities in Australia and overseas. The state government has reduced a range of state government-issued parking fines by 25%. The state government has made regularly changes necessary for council to reduce this. Under the new framework, council can reduce their fines from $112 to $80. To make this change, councils must adopt it, and by advising the minister in writing by the 1st of January. This can be done by completing the slip attached to this report. Councils that opt in by the 1st of January will be able to lower their amounts. Councils who do not opt in by this date will have further opportunities to opt in at a later point in the year. But lower fines will be delayed. There will also be a 10-minute grace period for paid parking of more than one hour, commencing on the 31st of January 2019. The new grace period will apply to all finding authorities, including councils, and will be subject to certain exceptions in the interests of safety and preventing congestion, such as the commencement of a clearway zone. If council was to adopt this charge of the lower fees, it would actually see us receiving a projected loss of $244,000. And I'm saying projected because it's not funds that we actually count on. That council agrees, my recommendation, that council agrees to opt in to change to a lower parking fine to $80 instead of $112, indexed annually as per current practices, and advise the Minister of Industrial Relations before the 1st of January. I formally move that.
I have two questions if I...
Yes, councillor.
The first question is that I take it the 15-minute free parking period in the CBD, as it presently exists, is not affected by the 10-minute grace period, and it doesn't turn into a 25-minute period?
It was not intended to turn into a 25-minute, councillor. It would be, I would take advice, it'd be the 15 or the 10. It would not be an add-on. Yes, councillor Hagerty?
The second...
Oh, sorry, councillor Shilton?
Sorry, the second question, and I'm not necessarily against what's proposed, but I noticed that Linda Scott, head of local government in New South Wales, a circulated council, and she wasn't particularly enthusiastic about these kind of things that are trotted out just before elections.
I have spoken to the president of the association personally about this, and her view was that people that live in the inner city wouldn't miss the money. And my point of view was that I think our situation is very different.
Thank you.
She agreed. Yes, councillor Hagerty?
Before I ask my question, I think I can answer councillor Shilton's. The grace period is if you've parked for one hour or more, so it wouldn't apply to 15 minutes.
Yeah, that's true.
The amount of revenue that we are losing, is that just applying the fines to... Basically, how much we raised in fines and applying it there? If so, are there any additional administrative costs? So, programming a 10-minute grace period into any system or any, you know, are there changes to how we administer it that are going to have additional administrative costs?
Not...
The figure that's given there, firstly, I should stress, councillors, that's just the period from 1st of March to June 30th. So you need to do some maths to work out your annual reduction in fees. No, we don't think there would be any additional administrative costs. It would be a matter of the compliance officers just making sure they check their watch against the ticket before they ticketed anyone.
And can I also stress that the amount of money, which we, we've got some calculations from previous collections, which were often, would be the right word. We receive quite a lot of attention for our fines that we do receive as a council, along with other councils. And when it is budgeted, it's budgeted as projected amount, not a real amount. So that's why I'm very careful to say this is not a real figure in the future budget. Okay, I'm going to put it. Those in favour, those against, the carried, carried. Thank you, councillors.
Was that unanimous?
It was.
Can we note it as such?
Yes, I think that's fine. I've just got to find the second one now. Ah, here it is, sorry. I know it's the last meeting, but the second meeting is the 100th anniversary of Women in Local Government and Law. This year marks a centenary since the New South Wales Parliament passed the Women's Legal Status Act 1918. The Act enabled women to stand for election to local government and the Legislative Assembly, and to practise as lawyers, and become justices of the peace. This is a momentous occasion, and as the first female mayor of Liverpool, I acknowledge this, the activism and advocacy that would have happened before my time. The hard work of very many people who inspire us all is very welcomed, and obviously continues to be our legacy, their legacy. Our own governor, general counsel, Elizabeth Espinaz-Nosa, has taken up the position of presidency of the New South Wales Law Society in 2019, an honour for both herself and council to be proud of. Council continues to make efforts to achieve equity and equality of women across all walks of life. And throughout the year, council has hosted events celebrating and uplifting women in our communities, from the International Women's Day to White Ribbon Day. In 2019, council will host the Australian Local Government Women's Association New South Wales Branch Conference, and I'm hoping to see all my colleagues attend. We recognise how far women have come, with many in leadership positions across our LGA. We also concede that there is still work to be done. I am proud that council is officially a white ribbon accredited organisation.
and we do take quite a significant number of refugees, they have a quite significant impact in our LGA.
Okay.
Happy to second it.
Thank you councillor did. Is there any discussion? I think it's fairly clear cut. All right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare carried unanimously. Could someone get councillor Hagerty back in the room? The next item on the agenda is on page 64.
I'd like to move a motion, madam mayor.
Who said that? Oh, councillor, yes.
Sorry, madam mayor, are we going to second the previous minutes?
It's done, the minutes are gone. Yeah, you missed the minutes, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move a motion.
Yes.
So council amend the contributions plan with the following rates. One, granny flats to be a flat contribution fee of $5,000. Two, all existing rates be increased by 10% per year for the next 10 years. Three, effective 1st July 2019. Also, for number two, if I could just add, just plus CPI, Consumer Price Index, just for inflation purposes.
Yep, include that. CPI to be included on all amounts. Okay, do we have a second item?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor.
Just some clarity there. So is that 10% year-on-year for five years? Or is that 10% over five years?
No councillor, sorry, it's supposed to be for the next 10 years. So number one will be granny flats, a flat rate of $5,000. And then number two will be all existing rates be increased by 10% per year for the next 10 years, plus Consumer Price Index to be included in that rate. And then number three, for it to be effective from 1st of July 2019.
So 10% year one, another 10% year two, another-
Correct councillor.
That's very courageous.
So that's compounding, okay.
So just to clarify, is that 10% on top of CPI or 10% including CPI?
It's a 10% figure, but whatever the next figure is, CPI actually happens and it's a 10% figure. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Also, point of order-
Yes councillor?
Are we able to increase rates or do we have to go to OLG?
I will get some advice on that. We've just been asked, are we able to do this legally?
Two potential issues there. Firstly, we would need to go out on public exhibition again. Second, my back of the envelope gives me a pretty good sense that that would increase rates within the third or fourth year to over the cap that we are legally allowed to put on them. So I would need to do the maths on that and seek some advice about increasing beyond the cap. But the first matter, that it would need to go on public exhibition, that would give council staff time to seek the advice.
Does IPART need to approve that or OLG or someone like that?
IPART sets the cap, so I'd need to get advice from them.
Then can we add a number or a D, yep, for it to go on public exhibition?
Well, it would have to. The second item for that was councillor Hagede for the typist. Okay, would someone like to, you wish to speak to your motion?
I've got a question, madam mayor.
Yes, certainly. What is your question councillor? It's all right councillor.
The question through you to the responsible person, just a sketch as to what our neighbouring councils are doing in relation to the levying of contributions on secondary dwellings, just a general outline, thanks.
Mr Moore, are you able to answer that? It's in relation to the secondary dwellings, we've already got the table in the initial contribution rate.
I don't have that information. I've got, there's a table on page 66 councillor that sets out the contribution rates around the different neighbouring councils which are listed in that table. But they are the total contribution rates, not the rates for secondary dwellings. I don't think I have that information, so I'd need to take that on notice.
And page 68 goes close with the comparison of contribution rates in nearby local government areas indicates that the contribution rate is reasonable, but I was specifically getting at whether they're doing similar in relation to secondary dwellings. I understand that is the case, but I was seeking your confirmation.
It's really, I can say that other councils certainly are levying rates for secondary dwellings.
Sorry, that was are or aren't?
They are doing that. I just can't tell you exactly, you know, how our proposed rates would compare. Anecdotally, I'm aware of some councils where the rates are very high, you know, akin to what we levy for a, for a single dwelling in fact, for those secondary dwellings. But I'd need to come back to you with accurate information on the actual figures.
Thank you. Any other questions councillor Hall? We'll do questions and then we'll get you to speak councillor. Yes councillor?
My concern here is B, states all existing rates increased by 10% for the next, are we talking about annual rates or are we talking about the contribution plan?
Thank you for that. Maybe we can change the word, that it's actually the contributions. Thank you.
And is the CPI on top of that 10%?
CPI will be on top because it will be part of the actual cost, it'll have to be looked at each year. Okay, any other questions? All right, councillor, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I believe Liverpool should pride itself on being affordable. Everyone should have an opportunity, and I don't believe that council should make it tougher. It's already tough enough to get ahead. A 400% increase from current rates, which is proposed, isn't fair and is quite extreme. I believe that this current motion strikes a balance between an increase and providing council with extra contributions as well as maintaining fairness. And I hope that councillors have noted, as it says in the report, all price increases will be passed on to the purchaser. And the report recognises this, you know, it's not hitting developers. Developers know they have to pay massive contributions for massive developments. This is hitting mums and dads who are just trying to get ahead.
Thank you. Councillor Caliander, do you wish to speak to your foreshadowed motion?
Could I foreshadow a motion or do we let councillor Caliander speak?
You're going to foreshadow another motion councillor?
Yes.
Okay, well what is it? I'll take your foreshadowed, foreshadowed.
As per the Bork, except the increases are phased in over two years. So 50% year one, 50% year two. And also that it applies only to DA's that are lodged from, assuming this is passed, DA's that are passed from tomorrow. So you've currently got a DA under assessment, I don't think that's reasonable that we slap her.
You're grandfathering.
Grandfathering is the word I'm looking for, yes.
Okay, can I have clarification, just to see where we're up? The main contention here is about granny flats. And under councillor Hagerty's new foreshadowed, foreshadowed motion, what would be the contribution for a granny flat under that? Yeah, but it's 50% in the first year, that would be very similar, wouldn't it, to what?
If I can clarify, madam mayor?
Yes councillor?
I recall from the briefing session that granny flats were currently zero and council would like to increase it to $7,000. So granny flats have essentially, are going to essentially jump from zero to $7,000.
Or, excuse, just one more question then. Under councillor Hagerty's motion, it would be three and a half in the first year and going up to six.
There is, councillor, just making sure I'm giving you the right information. The granny flat information is on the bottom of page 65 of your report. If your granny flat gets bigger, the fee gets bigger, okay? So if you're a one-bedroom granny flat, it's $7,893. If you're bigger, it's $9,900. If it's three bedrooms, it's three grannies sharing, $13,407.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to absorb councillor Hagerty's foreshadowed, foreshadowed motion into my foreshadowed motion.
Okay, so you're amending your motion to be councillor Hagerty's motion, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I don't consent to that, so you might as well put councillor-
Hagerty is a second to the foreshadowed motion. Thank you councillor Sheldon. Okay, would you like to speak to your motion councillor Caliander?
Yes, I think the report in this month's papers sets out the reasoning behind, you know, recommending contributions for secondary dwellings quite well. I think phasing in the contributions over a two-year period is a measure for fairness and allows residents to sort of catch up with the increase in contributions. So I guess that, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers against the original motion?
I will speak against.
Thank you councillor.
And in speaking against, in a roundabout way, I will speak for the foreshadowed. I appreciate what councillor Ayad's doing there, I have similar sentiments. However, I think phasing in over 10 years is too long a timeframe and in effect defeats the purpose of the revised contributions. Two years, 50%, I think strikes a nice balance. We get them up to a reasonable benchmark compared to other local government areas, but we also don't, I guess, slug them with a big hit. It comes in bit by bit. In regards to the granny flats, I think you build a granny flat, someone lives there. It's quite reasonable to expect that they've got a car, that car, that's an additional car on our streets. That's additional demand on our services, additional demand on parks, additional demand on libraries, additional demand on the sewerage system. It's only fair that they make a contribution. And I think $7,000 by year two, three and a half in the first year or roundabout, depending on how big it is, is a reasonable contribution.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers for the foreshadowed motion or the motion?
Madam mayor, if I may?
Yes, you get the right reply. You can speak against the foreshadowed one.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that with the 50% over the first, was it the first year? Or the, yeah, with that over the first year, I just wanted to bring to council's attention, that's a 200% increase, which is quite significant, it's a significant amount.
Can we see the first motion?
You're not maintaining affordability, you know? Everyone's happy to go on about affordability when it comes to swimming lessons, but when it comes to this, nobody seems to care about affordability, which I find quite interesting.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Rowe?
Can we read the first motion again? I could bring it down, thank you.
Okay, any other speakers for or against either the foreshadowed motion or the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, what is your question?
So, Part A, the granny flats to be charged a flat contribution rate of $5,000, that's it forever. There's no all existing contribution rates. The problem that we've got here is that it is a growing concern for the community that we are increasing densities and we've got to have-
Councillor, you're now entering to debate, so you either have to speak for or against?
I'm speaking for the foreshadow motion, I think.
Okay, thank you councillor, continue.
It's got to have some sort of plan that it is on an ongoing basis. If we wait, and if I can read the actual foreshadow motion again, so that we can see that. We've basically got to be able, we're giving them a bit of a break so that we're phasing it in over two years, but we've got to have a system in place because to keep up with the increasing in development, if we put it off for too much longer, the development will be here and we haven't gathered the money which is going to help us to be able to provide the services. So as much as I agree that we do not want to harm the mums and dads that are putting in a granny flat, we do also not want to harm the rest of the constituents because we have to have a means to be able to supply the services and infrastructure that they're going to require to be able to cope with the additional population that we're putting into the place. So I'm sorry, but I think I would have to go for the foreshadow motion.
Thank you councillor. Any other speakers for or against? If not, I'm going to give the mover of the motion the right of reply. Write a reply councillor Ayad.
Madam mayor, I just want the councillors to be aware that I am open to changing my motion if they have any suggestions, and I am not against an increase in contributions. I think it's a great idea, I just don't want it to be so dramatic. So if they'd like to add something, I'm happy, I'm happy to take that on board and add it in. I mean, if they want to increase granny flats, I'm fine with that. But they need to recognise that granny flats are a certain size. People build them to keep the family unit together. And if they do build them as a rental, it's going to take them a very long time to receive their return on investment. Therefore, you're essentially slowing down development in Liverpool. And you're slowing down development while no longer maintaining affordability in Liverpool. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. I'm now going to put to the vote those in favour of the original motion.
Madam mayor, sorry, pardon me, but does anyone have anything to suggest? I'm happy to take it on board.
I appreciate your kindness, but the debate and everything has finished formally.
Can I have another question?
No, it's too late councillor. The right of reply has been taken. I'm going to put the motion, those in favour of the original motion, as put by councillor Ayad and seconded by councillor Hagede. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against, I see it as defeated. I'll put the foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor Caliander and seconded by councillor Hagerty. Those in favour, those against, declare carried.
Record me as voting against, thank you madam mayor.
They've got to record it councillor. Did you get that all typists? Do you need, oh, thank you. The next item's on page 73.
Questions, madam mayor?
You're moving the motion councillor did?
No, I'm just asking questions.
Question? Yes councillor.
Yeah, through you, madam mayor, to the CEO. The question is, is our current court case proceeding?
if we put it off for too much longer, the development will be here. And we haven't gathered the money which is going to help us to be able to provide the services. So as much as I agree that we do not want to harm the mums and dads that are putting in a granny flat, we do also not want to harm the rest of the constituents because we have to have a means to be able to supply the services and infrastructure that they're going to require to be able to cope with the additional population that we're putting into the place. So I'm sorry, but I think I would have to go for the foreshadow motion.
Thank you councillor. Any other speakers for or against? If not, I'm going to give the mover of the motion the right of reply. Write a reply councillor Ayad.
Madam mayor, I just want the councillors to be aware that I am open to changing my motion if they have any suggestions. And I am not against an increase in contributions. I think it's a great idea, I just don't want it to be so dramatic. Um, so if they'd like to add something, I'm happy, I'm happy to take that on board and add it in. I mean, if they want to increase granny flats, I'm fine with that. But they need to recognise that granny flats are a certain size. People build them to keep the family unit together. And if they do build them as a rental, it's going to take them a very long time to um, receive their um, return on investment. Therefore, you're essentially slowing down development in Liverpool. And you're slowing down development while no longer maintaining affordability in Liverpool. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. I'm now going to put to the vote those in favour of the original motion.
Madam mayor, sorry, pardon me, but does anyone have anything to suggest? I'm happy to take it on board.
I appreciate your kindness, but the debate and everything has finished formally.
Can I have another question?
No, it's too late councillor. The right of reply has been taken. I'm going to put the motion, those in favour of the original motion. It's put by councillor Ayad and seconded by councillor Didd. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against, I see it as defeated. I'll put the um, foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor, councillor Caliander and seconded by councillor Haggerty. Those in favour, those against, declare it carried.
Record me as writing against, thank you madam mayor.
They've got to record it councillor.
Thank you.
Did you get that all typist? Do you need, oh, thank you. The next item's on page seventy-three.
Questions, madam mayor.
You're moving the motion councillor Didd?
No, I'm just asking questions.
Question, yes councillor.
Yeah, through you, madam mayor, to the CEO. The question is, is our current court case proceeding or related to these lanes?
My apologies councillors, I, I did read this. Councillor, there, there are proceedings relating to lot eleven progress circuit court currently underway. Um, however, the advice we've received is that councillors going through this process will not affect um, that court, court proceedings regardless.
Well, I can, I can say if it does affect or not, this is up to the court. What we have learnt from you, madam CEO, if there is a case before the court, council should not interfere because it doesn't look good for us. Therefore, I'm happy to move that, that council deferred the item EGR O W zero-two till the court finalise its decision. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Just, I'll take some advice here, hold on a moment.
Councillors, obviously if you choose to defer it, you choose to defer it. However, um, having this recommendation resolved by council would strengthen council's case in the proceedings in which currently underway, so they should be conscious of that, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we have, yes councillor Haggerty?
Hi, are we able to move this to later in the agenda?
We can defer it to later in the agenda, I'll take that on as a motion, yes?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Yeah, all right, somebody would like, I can ask why? Yes, why?
Uh, I would like some advice from council staff in regards to the email we all got.
Okay then, fair enough.
Which they obviously haven't got.
I'm happy as the chair to take it on and to have it later in the agenda. And I'll just put a little note here, if the mover of the deferral motion is happy with that because we'll be dealing with this deferral motion at the same time, so deal with it later. Okay, next items on page eighty-one.
Move that way, thank you madam mayor.
That was quick councillor Sheldon.
I'll second madam mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion?
We're talking about EGR O three.
Yes, we are.
I have a uh, a foreshadowed motion.
What is your motion councillor?
Well, it's fairly lengthy, so I'll give it to our typist.
Oops, three.
This is in relation to the shopping trolleys. I leave one and two as they are. I have a three and a four.
Okay.
And you may recall this was to do with a question with notice I put in some previous council meetings ago. What I would like three is write to the state and federal government to review legislation enabling council similar powers to that in Queensland so that councils can move more effective, so that council more effectively manage abandoned shopping trolleys. And four, delegates to the CEO the finalisation of the draft development control plans and reports back to council summarising the details of the submissions upon conclusion of the exhibition period.
Happy to second that motion. Yeah, thank you. Yep, no problem. Yep, that's fine.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just put you for the sake of suitability, any opposition? Because I think it's pretty straightforward. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous. Next one is on page eighty-seven.
Move that way.
Thank you councillor Haggerty, you're seconded.
So, madam mayor, are we on EGR O four?
We are.
I'd like to move a motion for that one.
No, we've already got a move of the, a motion, yours would be a foreshadowed motion.
Can I do a foreshadowed, madam mayor?
That's fine. Who's your seconded councillor Haggerty?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander. That's as per the book councillor. And councillor Ayad, you're moving a foreshadowed, what's your foreshadowed?
Yep, my foreshadowed is, um, number one, council and the community does not support the proposal in its current form. Two, council and the community do support development of a town centre and acknowledges that it has been years in the making. Three. Yep, and then three, council defers the consideration of this planning proposal until a revised plan from the proponent, together with the community, sorry, together with community consultation, has taken place.
Thank you.
I have more, madam mayor.
Oh, there's more points?
Sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I'm just checking it as a typist.
That's all right.
And then number four, thank the community of Middleton Grange for their feedback and work with them to deliver the infrastructure, services and town centre that they deserve. Number three, council defers the consideration of this planning proposal until a revised plan from the proponent, together with community consultation, has taken place.
I'm happy to second that.
Okay, that's all, madam mayor, I'm happy with that.
Thank you very much councillor.
I have a couple of questions.
Certainly councillor.
If I may, um, how long have council and the proponent been negotiating uh, to get this, get this to this point?
Um, it would be approximately two years. Mr Smith, is that accurate?
Yep.
And that's a negotiated position that all parties have come to agree on, is it?
Uh, post gateway um, conditions that we received from DPE. Yes, it has been negotiated position to um, to get, to get to a position where council felt satisfied and the proponent felt satisfied that the gateway conditions were being met as, as directed by DPE.
Um, and earlier, I believe, uh, one of the speakers spoke about a whole raft of new, I'll call them amendments, um, you know, roads and parks and other sets of wonderful things. Now, they sounded very significant to me. Uh, is there a threshold around planning proposals where if there are a certain number of amendments or if the amendment is a significant change from the original, that, you know, i.e. it can't be accepted or it's recommended that you withdraw and resubmit another one?
Uh, I'll ask Mr Moore to advise me on that.
Take you through the CEO, there's no such threshold. But we would be talking about um, revisions that would need to go back to the department of planning and back on exhibition for, you know, further community import. So there aren't any thresholds to say how much you can amend a planning proposal. That's all um, open to negotiation as part of the process. But there are steps we would need to go back and revisit if, if the plan's changed along those lines.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right, would councillor Haggerty like to speak to his motion?
I would. Um, uh, I, I think um, the community's view is quite clear on this. If you have a look at the uh, the books, the report, um, pretty significant amount of um, submissions, ninety-four percent of which oppose the planning proposal. Um, if you dig a bit deeper into what those um, submissions said, both for and against, um, everyone in Middleton Grange wants a town centre. That's not what the debate is about. Uh, the debate is about the uh, scale and amount of apartments that will come with that development. Um, can I also commend council on their community consultation during this process? So we had a town forum out at Middleton Grange which was attended by several hundred? Three, four, six, six hundred in a suburb of about two and a half thousand. Um, that's pretty significant if you consider that perhaps one partner might have been at home looking after the kids. Um, that's a pretty significant part of the population. Uh, so thank you council for putting that on and, and putting that together. And uh, it is difficult at times to get community consultation uh, on things. This was uh, not the case here, so well done. And also thank you to the community of Middleton Grange. Um, it works both ways. We've got to try and get you guys to contribute and you guys have got to contribute and you've done that here. Um, I've heard very loud and clear, um, that ninety-four percent of you do not want, that ninety-four percent of you oppose this planning proposal. Um, and that's why I put it as per the book. Um, I'm, you know, I was elected to listen to my community and I've heard you loud and clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the mover of the foreshadowed motion like to speak to their motion?
I would like to uh.
No councillor, I'm asking the mover. Councillor?
Yes, please madam mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you councillor Haggerty. I too was elected to listen to community members. I'm at Middleton Grange every day of the school term. My children attend Thomas Hassel Anglican College. And it's in dire need of some infrastructure. People are not against the town centre. My foreshadowed motion allows the community once again to speak up, to work with the proponent so the plans can be revisited and everybody can be happy and satisfied. And the people of Middleton Grange get the services and town centre that they deserve. I would like councillors to bear in mind that the proponent can already develop on the land. And yes, I agree, it's a large number. The proponent has brought it down. The proponent has been working closely with the community and with council. As their presentations indicated, they, they are happy to further work with council and the community to deliver a town centre that the community deserves. Um, madam mayor, I just have a couple more points, if I may. So yes, I'd like councillors to bear that in mind while they're making their decision on what way they're going to go. So the proponent can already develop, the proponent hasn't developed. They've taken their time, they've consulted with the community, they still are consulting with the community. And they deserve to have another sit-down with council and they deserve another community consultation. This has been years in the making and they haven't walked away from the community at Middleton Grange. They've stood by them, they've listened to them and they've recognised the needs of the community there. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. councillor Rhodes, would you like to speak? Are you speaking for the?
I'm going to speak for the foreshadowed motion, madam mayor. Um, I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Ayad because it does seem a little bit pointless for the work supposedly that has been done not to be presented to council so that the, the staff have the opportunity to evaluate whether what they have done, what they are proposing, does meet to the satisfaction of the needs that have been, that have been, um, that they've been told that they've got to fulfil. Not only by the residents up there in Middleton, but also um, the, uh, the, the planning department. It just seems a little bit pointless to throw it out if all they are asking for is a meeting to put forward what they believe is answering all of those questions. It does not make sense to me not to at least listen to it. If it's no good, then throw it out. But not to listen to it now after it progressing for such a long time, what has it been, two years? You know, we, the council first moved a motion that we directed the CEO to negotiate and to deliver a town centre for these people. You know, I just feel that for us to be able to do that now in the shortest, most efficient possible way would be to at least listen, to hear what these people have got to say in their new proposal. So therefore, I think I would vote for the foreshadow motion in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Before we proceed, I'm just going to ask some questions for the sake of clarity. Um, I'll ask the CEO, um, if, regardless of how the council votes, is this development dead in the water? If people vote for what's in the book, is it dead in the water?
Uh, no, the proponent can submit another planning proposal.
Okay, so negotiations can continue and the development can be sort of ma-managed, if you like?
Uh, yes, as Mr Moore spoke about earlier this evening, in any change to the planning proposal, as has been discussed this evening and council staff have not been privy to that, would need to go to the department of planning for gateway and for community consultation again anyway if it's a change on the scale of which is proposed. So regardless, you would be going through, through the same process. Whether this was withdrawn and the proponent decided to put another planning proposal out, you would be going through gateway, through department of planning and you would be going back out to community consultation.
So it wouldn't be thrown out, end of story, that's, okay, thank you.
I can, I'll just ask Mr Moore to add one more thing to that.
Uh, thank you CEO, I, I will just add one thing. Uh, the proponent has some options as well. Um, if the recommendation were adopted as is in discussions with the department of planning after tonight. Um, so we, we would inform the department of planning of the outcome if it were as per the book. That is, that council doesn't support the um, proposal proceeding. Uh, the applicant can then discuss with the department of planning. I spoke to the department this afternoon and confirmed this. And they have, uh, they are able to make the call then, whether they accept some amended plans, whether they would in fact allow the proposal to proceed towards amendment. Um, and they may do that with the input of some expert specialist, specialist advice from the um, the independent commission. Uh, so just pointing out that there are options still even within the life, if you like, of this current uh, planning proposal uh, beyond tonight if it were adopted as per the recommendation.
Madam mayor.
Thank you for that.
In light of that information, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, so um, if that did happen, what kind of a cost and what kind of a fee would be involved for the proponents and manter group?
Through the CEO, I wouldn't have a clue, sorry. Oh, you mean a fee imposed by the department of planning?
Yeah, or by council if they resubmit through council or?
No fees from council's point of view. Um, if they went, i-if this proposal was withdrawn and we went right back to the start again into a sort of pre-gateway phase, begin from scratch, then our usual fees for a planning proposal would apply.
Which is?
Oh, do you know David?
I, I think it's seventy thousand per planning proposal. Um, Mr White, can you quickly check the fees and charges for me?
Uh, but, but, sorry, if, if the, if the option or the, the route is explored by the proponent that I spoke about with the department of planning, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think, certainly there wouldn't be any council fees. I don't believe the department of planning would impose any fees uh, as part of, as part of that process.
Okay, and if that did happen, how long would it take for the people of Middleton Grange to know if they are actually receiving a town centre or not?
Through the CEO, I, I, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry. That's in the, that would be in the hands of the department of planning. And to a larger extent, it would depend on, you know, what decision the department decided to make, how quickly the proponent responded to any additional information they may require if there were amendments. So there's a lot of moving parts to that. Um, I really couldn't reliably say how, how long that process might take.
Okay, I'm just interested to know because I have uh, parents at school pickup asking me when this town centre is coming along. Also, just one more question. Um, can we have clarification on what the proponent, proponent can currently develop on the land?
Through the CEO, I, I might defer to um, David, Mr Smith to uh, um, if, if, if he's able to um, talk about gross floor areas and number of stories currently permitted under the planning controls?
Thank you. Through the CEO, so the current planning controls on the site will allow a town centre of a moderate scale to, to establish. So it's currently zoned B two local centre and R one general residential. Uh, the current floor space ra- The current floor space ratios that apply in that area range from 0.75 to 1, up to 1.5 to 1. And height of buildings range from eight and a half metres to 18 metres. The exact amount of development would be subject to a development application that isn't in front of council at the moment. What is in front of council at the moment is amendments to those standards and the zone.
So, and can I just ask a supplementary to that? How long has that been the case? How long has that zoning been in place?
The, I'd have to double check exactly how long it's been in place. But it has been in place broadly for the last five years. The plan is 10 years old. I'd have to check, I think Middleton Grange, there were some amendments in that area through a previous amendment, but I'd have to check the exact date that those zones came in.
Okay, so I guess one answer to councillor Ayad's question is they could have had their town centre five years ago.
Was that a question?
Councillor Hagerty, they could have also had a develop-
Through the chair, please, councillors.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor. They could have also had a development that they don't want. But the proponent has very goodwill, which I can see you don't want to take on board.
That's enough, councillor. That's enough.
I have a question, Madam-
Yes, councillor Rhodes?
In council's opinion, what would be the quickest, most efficient way to resolve this matter if the proponent met the conditions in their new proposal? To have a negotiation with council or to take any of those other options that you have suggested? What would be the quickest way to get a town centre approved for the people of Middleton Grange?
Can I put forward?
Hold on a moment, just let the CEO answer that question.
Thank you, councillor. That, that, that's a somewhat complex question. Because at this point in time, we don't have a change to the proposal put in front of us. As, as I stated earlier, it would require going to DPE for gateway, whether we went back to negotiation with this current proposal or whether the proponent put a new proposal up. That would then require a further period of public consultation. And of course, at the end of that, council officers would make an assessment based on the public consultation and based on whatever gateway we got from the Department of Planning, which would then go to council. So there's so many variables within that that I, I would struggle to give you a timeframe or to, or to adequately advise on what would be the fastest way. At this point in time, it's up in the air. I'm sorry, councillor.
Yeah, so in the interests, and if, if the second approves, in the interests of being constructive and giving the community what they want, I might add a point 10. Which is that council work with the applicant to explore the option of some form of temporary retail on the site. So I'll make that nice and broad, but something like, you know, container ships, that, which worked quite well. I'm not saying container ships, but something that's temporary and not too cost effective. I mean, you know, not too costly. I know that something like a container ship village worked quite well in Christchurch after the earthquake. It's temporary, it's not at too much cost, you can get some income in there. And everybody on the floor of council and everybody in Middleton Grange gets what they want, which is some shops.
Through the chair, if I may.
Thank you, councillor. Is the second, hold on a moment, councillor Ayad, is the second happy with that amendment? Adding that point 10, councillor Caliander? Excuse me?
Point of order. A couple of people in the gallery called me a disgrace. And I've taken quite, I'm quite offended.
Yes, the same rules apply to the audience as does the council. If you are out of order, you will actually be removed.
I'd like to request that they be removed.
No, I will not do it at this time, but if there is a further breach, that will happen. Councillor Ayad?
Through the chair, if I may. I mean, with all due respect to the people of Christchurch, why would you want the Middleton Grange town centre to look like a disaster zone? They deserve a state of the art town centre, not one that's temporary, that belongs in a disaster zone with, in a disaster zone with all due respect to the people of Christchurch.
I thank you for your question, councillor. I think it should remain unanswered at this point. Have we any other speakers for or against the motions before us?
Yes, madam.
Yes, councillor did.
Well, Madam Mayor, fair, so for crystal clear, the resident do not support the current proposal. And I'm siding with them. I feel with them. It's now issue with that. And secondly, the resident have an issues with the infrastructure in the area. They have an issue with the traffic in the area. I don't understand that as well. But my understanding, what the resident wants to have, a small town centre. They, they are not against it. So the current proposal is rejected by the community and by myself as well. Having said that, it doesn't mean we shouldn't give a chance for the developer to come back to council with a new proposal. It does satisfy the resident and the area and council find solution for all of that. So I don't understand why we, we don't give them this opportunity to come back. We are not going to approve any plan, any proposed plan unless everyone is happy with it. As simple as that. We, we, we are, we are not going to support this plan. It's very obvious, it's full stop. But give him a chance to come back to you, council staff, sit down with you, put a new proposal. What the resident maybe, like I own, is happy with this proposal because they are not against a town centre. Why we don't give them this opportunity to go and sit down and review the current one? And like, I'm on the resident's side. I'm lobbying with you, with them against you to find a solution for the traffic jam and for the infrastructure in Middleton Grange as well. We have to find a solution to it. And they want to see like a fairly, you know, this modern, a, a, a town centre. So they are not against it. So throwing this proposal now, rejected, what's it have to go all over again from the beginning and waste money and time and everything? We have to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Through the chair, if I may. I'd just like to add, I agree with everything that-
Excuse me, councillor Ayad, are you, you speaking against the original motion or asking a question?
I'm speaking for the foreshadowed motion, Madam Mayor, is that okay?
You've already spoken for it.
Well, I just want to make a comment in light of what councillor Haddid has said, that I agree with what he said. And the foreshadowed motion actually does exactly that.
Councillor.
And allows the community to have their say again and work with the proponent again.
You are out of order. Please be quiet. Now, I'm going to ask if any other councillor, Hall, you wish to speak for or against?
I would like to speak for councillor Ayad's foreshadowed motion. I too attended that residential meeting that some 600 residents went to. I also live within about 500 metres of the Middleton Grange and I am familiar with the number one problem that they have, which is access to Cow Pasture Road via Qantas Boulevard. That is the single biggest issue facing those people every morning. The lack of a second access point is the cause for all the concern. I think what the residents are concerned about is that, is that if you increase the residential component of the town centre significantly, you are only going to exasperate the problems that already exist. And it doesn't matter what you put there at the moment, town centre or no town centre, you still have the existing traffic problem. The moment you put a town centre there, irrespective of its size, that problem will increase. And it's going to cause those residents to get more and more angry. The answer to the problem initially is the second access road. And from what I've been told, that the developer is prepared to contribute to that. So I've been told. I do not know if that's true. However, that needs to occur. I believe also that if we reject this proposal, that is going to lengthen the process. It's going to cause more expense to everyone. And therefore, I think it's only fair that we give the developer of the area an opportunity to present his, her, her case to the council. It's not going to make any difference if the council were prepared to look at it and get the community involved before all of this has to be repeated several times over at a significant cost. I cannot see why we can't just simply look at this and, and base its, its information on its merits, present it to the community and let them have another look. I think if we reject it, we are doing the residents of the area a significant disadvantage, an advantage they already suffer due to the traffic. The sooner you get this solved, the sooner you will solve the traffic problems and you will have the town centre that these people want. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We've had several speakers for the foreshadowed motion. Do we have any further speakers who wish to speak against the foreshadowed motion?
Madam Mayor, I wish to speak against the foreshadowed motion.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
We've had a number, a number of councillors say that they're in support of the foreshadowed motion because they're on the side of residents. I wonder if anyone was actually listening to the representative of residents in the public gallery who stated that the residents' association was in favour of the recommendation in the, in the book. We've also heard councillors say that the, the reason why they're supporting the foreshadowed motion is because of the idea that it will stretch out the length of time that residents will suffer without amenity for longer. However, however, it's already been two years since that, since basically we've, you know, not been able to come to an agreement with, with the developer. There is no such time limit on, in the foreshadowed motion to suggest that residents won't go without such amenity for another two years or for longer as we wait for such a proposal to come before council. So I see glaring holes in the foreshadowed motion. And for those of, for those of us who want to be on the side of residents, they've already made their view clear. They support the motion as per the book.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody wishing to speak against the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm not speaking for or against, I just want to clarify.
Yes?
Clarify that this has actually been in council for three and a half years, not two years.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody wish to speak against the original motion, which is the book motion? Okay, any other speakers? Okay, you wish to write a reply, councillor Hagerty?
No, I will, I will decline. Let's just put this to a vote, please.
Okay then. Well, I'll put the original motion, it's moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander, which is the motion, the book with an extra number 10. Those in favour? Those against? To clear the motion carried. Moving on to the next item, and that is on page 107.
Madam Mayor, I'll move that motion with a few additions if possible.
Certainly, councillor. What is your motion?
The motion would include, and this is just, let me just, sorry. The motion would include, in point one, an audit of signage at playgrounds in the Liverpool LGA and at public transport stops in the Liverpool CBD, comma, including the no smoking areas in the Liverpool Mall. There are no smoking areas in the Liverpool Mall and there is, I'll continue with the motion, sorry, Madam Mayor. Then number eight, makes application in June 2019 to the EPA Clean O Cities Grant with a letter of endorsement from West Rock as having participated in the Bin Your Butts campaign and applies for any other possible grants that might become available. And number nine, replaces rubbish bins in the mall that have been damaged by the butting of cigarette butts on their tops. And 10, installs bat bin, butt bins alongside rubbish bins to stop future damage of the rubbish bins. And then continue on with number 11.
Okay, I just want to be clear just for my own self here, I think it's more the typist, poor typist. Is your number one the same?
Yes, exactly the same.
...of signage at smoke free areas in the Liverpool LGA and playgrounds?
At public transport stops in the-
And public transports.
Yeah, in the CBD.
In the CBD.
Including the no smoking areas if, and-
Okay, so your number one is being expanded to-
That, that's right.
-public transport to include public transport areas and playgrounds?
I thought that it had at public transport stops in the original motion, Madam Mayor. I might have been wrong.
Well, what I'm looking at on page 107, yes, it says, councillor receives a notes report and there are eight things.
Yes, number one we're looking at.
Audit of signage at smoke free areas in Liverpool LGA, production and installation of signage where required, a media campaign to educate the community about smoke free areas, education campaign delivered by council rangers undertaking active-
That's right, it's in the number one.
And so on goes down. So we're going to receive a note, the report, but, but what I-
Is now becoming number 11. So if we start off number one, with just the addition, including the no smoking areas in the Liverpool Mall.
I think it's captured already, councillor. I think it's a bit of overkill. I'm not trying to put rain on your parade, but it's just, I think everything you want to do will be captured by the LGA.
Well, can I just point out to you, Madam Mayor, that the signage that is in the Liverpool Mall is all over the place.
Well, that's why we're doing the audit. But I just want to make sure though that your application in June 2018, 19, I suspect, to the EPA, that's, has to be included, that's not in there.
Okay, number eight.
Yeah, and the rubbish bins in the mall.
In the mall must have-
Have been butted to death.
Yep, they're absolutely disgraceful. And 10, installs butt bins, I know they're expensive, alongside the rubbish bins to stop the future damage that is being done to rubbish bins.
Well, that's an expense item. May I make a suggestion that you get a cost for that? And ask that that be brought back to council because it is an expense that's just being plucked out of the air, unfortunately. And it's council's procedure, okay? Just so that we-
Well, I think they're about $7,000. I think that price has been given to us in a previous report, Madam Mayor. I know they're expensive.
You still would be, I think, a, a better process for you to ask for a report in regards to the cost of installing such bins.
All right.
Just so that keeps everybody out of trouble.
Happy to go with that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Is there any opposition?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councillor Hall?
Just a minor alteration to that.
Yep.
Number nine is on their tops, I would like added with the councillor's permission, with a suitable material not susceptible to butt damage.
Yeah, that's in there.
Was it?
Yep, it's there.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't see that.
Okay, so any opposi, hold on councillor Rhodes, any opposition to this?
We haven't moved, we've got a mover, a seconder.
Councillor Rhodes is moving, seconded, councillor Hall. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried unanimously.
Madam Mayor, before we move on to EGR 06, I wonder if I can move that we bring forward NOM 02 because there are a couple of people in the gallery who are waiting on this item.
Let me have a look at it. Yes, I'm happy to do that. It's on page 223. Okay, councillor, are you moving this in the absence of councillor Chitty?
I'll second it.
I second it.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Caliander moving and councillor Did seconding and councillor Ayad spouting. All right, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried, carried, do you want?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Done. Just remind me when I get up there that we've done it though. Yeah, Tony wasn't here and it went through. Councillor, I'm sorry, councillor Chitty wasn't here, I should say. Okay, next item's on page 111.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shilton, seconded, councillor Conib, any?
Just a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, certainly.
Which one is this? This is the EGR 06?
Yes. Page 111.
I just have a couple of questions about this. Noting on page 114, the graph of the city CBD number of car, public car places is 6,200. And then in paragraph one, it says the city centre catchment 8410 outside onsite residential and 3410 in the commercial and other land sites, that's 11,820. But I- But I think that we've got down there that the city centre is twenty thousand five hundred and thirty parking spaces. How did we get to that number of twenty thousand when the prior paragraph is talking about? It just doesn't add up.
What page is the twenty thousand?
Well, honour, the twenty thousand is on page one hundred and fifteen.
Oh, there it is, yes, I see it, thank you.
That adds up to eighteen thousand oh two oh, so I'm just questioning the, your figures.
Mr Moore, could you please answer that question?
We have an answer.
I haven't got the, I haven't got the exact mathematics for you, but what comprises the grand total of twenty thousand is made up of off-street and on-street car parking. So I think the difference between those two numbers is the on-street car parking component.
We can take that on notice and make sure we provide clarification on that.
I have another question. I'm presuming there is a point to this analysis report. Can somebody give me some sort of direction as to where we're going with this?
It's, the council of recommendation is to receive a note, this was in relationship to a notice of motion put by councillor Hagerty where we were requested to provide this information to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried, thank you. Next item on page one hundred and eighteen.
I move that way, madam mayor.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Conib, deputy mayor. Any opposition?
Just another question.
Certainly.
Um, understanding the framework, the four council representatives initially are Fairfield, Liverpool, Penrith and Walland Dilly?
No, there's eight councils, I'll do them in orders coming up. Walland Dilly, Camden, Campbelltown, ourselves, Fairfield, Penrith, Blue Mountains and Hawkesbury.
And do they all sit at the table at the one time?
There are multiple meeting points for city deal relationships, so the mayors have a mayoral group that meets, there is also a leadership group that's comprised of ministers and mayors, we have all mayors there but four at any given time with the voting rights. There is an implementation board which is assistance secretaries and all the general managers. There is a coordination group which is key stakeholders within the city deal process as well as secretaries representing both Commonwealth and federal.
So there's no opportunity that Liverpool is left out and not sitting at those tables?
No, I can assure you Liverpool is sitting at all the tables.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Can I say it's very difficult to be at all the tables?
Yeah, but we are.
But we are. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried. Next item's on page one hundred and twenty-three.
Move that way, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton, you've got a seconder?
I will second.
I had councillor Conib, I heard his voice.
I have a question.
Yep, what is your question?
In attachment to page six eighty-nine, bottom two paragraphs, it is stating that the Liverpool Community Drug Action Team under youth and crime prevention, and it's definitely talking about drugs in that and the need to address it. Is it addressed also in the domestic and family violence section?
I'd have to take that question on board.
I think I'll have to take that question on notice councillor, but we can provide you with that information while it's on the exhibition period.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes.
On page six ninety-four, the first paragraph, development of the local drug and alcohol strategy for Liverpool, why is there no measures and no timeframe?
The strategy's yet to be developed, so we're in the process of doing that. So the measures and timeframe will become attached to the drug and alcohol strategy.
So we're moving to put this on to exhibition without it being in the...
No, no, if you go over the page, so the measures and timeframe for the drug and alcohol strategy are yet to be developed.
Yeah.
But if you go over the page, you'll see from, the strategy is meant to be from twenty nineteen to twenty-two, and the measurable for this particular strategy is to have developed the strategy.
Okay, and the second point, it's going on exhibition from mid-January to the end of February. I'm a little bit concerned that we're doing a similar thing, that we're putting these things on exhibition close to the holiday seasons. And I'm not so sure that everybody is going to be back or concentrating on a very valuable item that's going before the constituents. And I was wondering, is there an opportunity that we could perhaps present this or exhibit this at, say, February to March, when I know everybody is back and everybody is concentrating again?
Councillor, that's entirely for you to determine. We have extended the exhibition period entirely for that reason, which is why it's open on February. But if you prefer us to exhibit from first of March to, first of February to thirty-first of March, there's no, there's no material impact on the strategy if we do that.
Well, why don't we do it from mid-January to the end of March?
Yep.
Whatever councillor...
The mover's happy with that, seconder happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
January to the end of March.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Does that have an impact on your ability to bring it back to the April meeting?
That's a good question, it would depend on how many submissions we received. We'll aim for April, but if we're unable to meet that, I would advise councillors for the CEO update.
Okay.
Does that mean the NOM part two, sorry, the part two of the motion, does that need to change? Do we need to put more flowery language in there or, no, fine?
It should be okay councillor. I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried. Next item is on page one hundred and twenty-seven.
Move that way, thank you, madam.
Thank you councillor Shelton, thank you councillor Did. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes councillor Hall?
Sorry, I noticed that there are quite a large number of councils donating to this. If all of those councils donate ten thousand dollars, that's going to be an awful lot of money. Has that been taken into consideration?
Councillor, while the region includes all of those councils, in my past experience with these awards, not all of the councils do make a financial contribution. Liverpool has been one of the largest sponsors and contributors in the past and while I can't speak for my sister councils, my understanding is that the majority of them won't make a contribution that's a financial one.
They may make a staff contribution. Yes councillor Hagerty?
I'd just like to say I attended last year's and it celebrates some of the very best work that happens in Western Sydney, work around community services, and I know that Liverpool won a number of awards. This is one of the best events I went to last year, and if I am lucky enough to attend this year, next year, or, you know what I mean, the next one, I'm sure it'll be just as good. It is a very fantastic event and I encourage as many people to go along as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
Yes councillor Caliander?
Is there any indication of where this, the current SEST awards will be held?
I'll have to take that on notice unless Miss Angiuliano knows. I don't think it's been advised yet, but we can find out and we'll get back to you councillor.
My only reasoning behind that was in case there was an opportunity to hold them in Liverpool.
More than happy to offer, we are the home of events in twenty nineteen.
We definitely are. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried. Next items on page...
Move that way, madam mayor.
I'll second councillor. Wait a minute, councillor Rhodes and councillor Caliander, yes, what is your question councillor Shelton?
Yeah, my question is, the motion as it stands at the moment is in relation to one particular area, and I'm just wondering if consideration's been given or will be given to other parts of the LGA for providing similar out-of-school hours care.
Miss Angiuliano, would you be able to answer that?
Yes, that is the case. We were trialling this as a, we're putting this report firstly, but there are already some discussions with various schools currently that are looking at this provision of care.
Can I suggest if the mover and the seconder agree that a paragraph three be added and it is noted, consideration will be given to the establishment of similar services in other LGA areas in due course.
Thank you. Mover and seconder happy with that?
Happy to accept that.
Wonderful.
Madam Mayor, could I speak for the motion?
You can, before I...
Madam Mayor, I was the seconder on that one.
I thought it was councillor Caliander, but if you choose to be the seconder, I've no dramas. Okay, councillor Aye was the seconder. Councillor Rhodes, speaker?
Yes, madam mayor, I'd just like to congratulate council for their initiative in this. I think that it is important that the constituents know that this is a not-at-cost-to-rate-payers initiative and it's also providing employment in our LGA, which again is not funded by ratepayers, and I congratulate the council staff who are putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried unanimously. Next items on page one three seven.
I have two questions, madam mayor.
What are your questions councillor Shelton?
The first question relates to page one four two of the book and clause four point one point seven. It appears the policy is that only solicitors who are members of the New South Wales Law Society are caught by this policy. It is not compulsory anymore for solicitors to actually be members of the New South Wales Law Society, and I'm wondering if there's any particular reason why we are setting a standard open about what applies to solicitors generally, for example, if a solicitor does not want to be a member of the law society for whatever reason.
Mr White, I'll hand that one to you.
Through you madam CEO. No, look, we simply put that in there, I think, to try and move towards a best practice standard. I understand though that it's voluntary and councillor, if you feel the need to, you're welcome to amend the policy as you would see fit.
There was one other as well, yeah, the second question, page one four seven. And that is paragraph four point six point two B. So subject all of those things, the CEO may provide access to legal advice to the council Can we take up may and put in must?
No, you can't. There could be reasons why council, councilors may not be able to share that. I've been in, personally, I've been in that position as a councillor in the past. I don't find it palatable personally, but there are on a rare occasions situations where information is received by the council, which is separate to the councilors. And that could be about the council law. Just by the by.
Appreciate that the clause already sets out a number of exemptions in relation to as much, and you're otherwise left with a clause that doesn't actually refer to the matters you just raised, it simply says may in any situation provide the advice, there's nothing governing, and the starting point should be that's subject to those conditions. If there's legal advice and it's relevant, the councillors ought to be able to see it.
Well, are you formally changing wording councillor?
Yeah, I prepare to move adoption then with page one four seven, little B, that's paragraph two, in the two places where the word may appears, to turn that into must. And I don't particularly trouble too much about the other point, but amend it so that solicitors don't necessarily have to be members of the law society if they don't feel like it.
I said that. I need to, I need for councillors to understand that, while I understand the reasons why people feel it's their right to have that legislation shown to them or opinion showed to them, and I don't disagree in principle, there will be occasions when, like it or not, councils may not be privy to certain information. But I will let the CEO explain the situation.
And I don't have a problem if there are circumstances, but it's not spelt out what those circumstances might be.
Yes.
I understand your concern councillor and I do appreciate it, this is, this is one of those matters where it is discretionary, however, I can think of numerous instances where I may have sought legal advice on a matter that pertains to councillors that I would be either reluctant or in fact prohibited in some cases to distribute to councillors. I'm happy to take this away if you would wish to defer it and to try and find a compromise position that doesn't fete in my discretion but makes it more explicit on what times I would exercise that, if that would satisfy you.
The alternative is with number B, simply to exclude where the legal advice relates to individual councillors, because that's no concern one way or the other to me.
There could be other instances, I would prefer, I would prefer councillor, if you would allow us to work on a compromise that satisfies you but also satisfies what I am required to do by law.
And in that case, I'll just move deferral.
Okay, councillor Shelton's moving deferral, and we already had a mover and a seconder? No, we didn't, we didn't have a mover and a seconder. So councillor Shelton's moving...
I'll move it or second it with him.
You're seconding deferral councillor Rhodes?
Yes, until we get a clarification.
No, that's fine, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Councillor Rhodes, can you turn off your microphone? Thank you. All right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried. Next items on page one hundred and fifty-nine.
I think I'm happy to move all the committees as a whole, madam mayor, if everybody else...
Second it.
Thank you. I'm going to put it then.
Second it.
Thank you, I've got, councillor Did beat you to it councillor Hall. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the clear it carried, they've all been done as a whole. Okay, next items on page seven, two eleven, sorry, I've just misread that. Page two hundred and eleven, which is, getting there slowly. Councillor Hagerty, questions with notice, you have the answers.
I thank Amazon for their brief answer. And if I read this correctly, they've agreed to come in and have me grill them further at a briefing.
Okay.
As such, I'm happy to receive a note.
Thank you. Next item's yours as well councillor.
Just to clarify, madam mayor, did I just hear that Amazon will be presenting to councillors at a briefing?
Well, that would be an appropriate place for them to speak to councillors, so yes. Excuse me, I've got the hiccups. Councillor Hagerty, you're next.
Ah, yes, the roundabouts. Since putting up this question, I have been contacted by a number of residents about this. I'm happy to receive and note it, but I will keep a keen eye and I encourage all the residents to keep a keen eye on roundabouts, and if you see weeds, please report them and let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just with regards to this, at the most recent Community Safety Committee, there was the idea that next year there would be sort of a see it, report it type campaign around, obviously not just kind of parks and maintenance issues, but also reporting of crime and that sort of thing. Could something like this be incorporated into that?
I'll seek advice.
There's no practical reason why it couldn't, I would just need to look at the logistics of it, I'm sure Mr Patterson would appreciate finding out what roundabouts need extra care.
Madam Mayor, if I may, for a question?
Yes councillor Rhodes, about roundabouts?
Yeah, about the roundabouts. This sparks my attention as to the conditions of the contracts for the subcontractors who are weeding the roundabouts. Are they, are they given a certain number of hours that they have to fulfil? And my question would be, if that is the case, what happens during times of drought or times of a lot of rain, when we might have more work or less work? Just puzzled me as to how the subcontractors are engaged.
Mr Patterson, are you able to answer that question or do you need to take that on notice to get a bit more information?
Well, we will need to take that on notice.
Thank you. Can I just put in one request seeing we're on roundabouts? Many, many years ago, we went through a beautification of roundabouts, which was terrific, except the foliage got so tall you couldn't read any of the signage on the roundabouts, so if you're going to make them beautiful, please make it sensible so you can still see the signs. Sorry, just throw that in there.
Take that on notice, madam mayor.
Thank you. All right, next item's on page nine, on page two one four, councillor Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to just receive a note at this point in time, thank you.
Thank you. Next items on page two fifteen, councillor Hall.
Yes, madam mayor, I have a couple of questions on that.
Yep.
This is Black Muscat Park, with the usual noise problems, and I did receive the answer, but there were actually some other complaints as well, and some of those are smoke-producing fires. I know that in those parks we have LP gas bottles and the idea is for the majority of people to use that. The problem is they're... The problem is they don't. There are people who actually have open fires and use those briquettes things, which when they finish with that, they tend to throw them onto the recreational area, causing future problems. Could we look at some sort of notice of motion that we could ask that signage be put up if we're allowed to, to only allow LP gas powered barbecues? They don't have to use the council one, but certainly it should be, in my humble opinion, be LP gas only, which means the smoke and all the other problems that are normally produced go away.
Yeah, councillor, I'd just have to seek some advice as to whether I can, I can limit things and that. But you and I are familiar with Black Mouskett Park, five, six years now of conversation and I'm aware of the issue. So I'll, I'll look into that matter for you.
I have a question or a comment, question, comment. Just in regards to the response. The sentence here, however, it is requested that general patrolling of the entire Chipping Norton Lakes precinct also occur. Is there something special about the, the people of Chipping Norton Lakes that ratepayers' money is spent on the private police force to patrol their suburb?
Councillor, the matter of Black Mouskett Park has been before council, I think on an annual basis for at least five or six years. We've had numerous resolutions in the past requesting that we manage the noise issues through the provision of a security contractor. As per the material you have there. I can't speak to whether there is something particular or special to the residents of Chipping Norton Lakes, but this has been an ongoing issue that in past has been resolved through a security contractor.
Yep, look, I'm quite, I understand the whole Black Mouskett Park issue and I support doing what we can there to sort those issues out. But this talks about patrolling the entire Chipping Norton Lakes precinct. So I just want to get some rationale as to why that's the case. And why aren't we just patrolling Black Mouskett Park and surrounding areas? Why are we patrolling a very large part of the LGA when we're not doing it for other areas that have, you know, I guess, issues?
We do receive noise complaints from other sections of Chipping Norton Lake. However, we can narrow the scope to just Black Mouskett Lake if that's what councillors prefer.
Question, Madam Mayor, does this include QNO7 as well? Are we doing them both at the same time as they are?
No, we're doing them separately at the moment.
Doing them separately?
Okay, we done with Black Mouskett?
Oh, just, just another point on that. I, I'm not sure if I like councillor Hagerty's opinion on that. The statement on to the people there being treated special. That's, those people are actually being badly done by, particularly during the Christmas breaks. When, or not the Christmas breaks, the period when high school students study for their HSEs. And the complaint has been in the past that the noise is so loud that they cannot study. I have personally been there, I've personally measured the noise level to be in the order of 90 decibels. And if you don't know what 90 decibels is, that's putting your ear next to a, one of those whippersnippers flat out. Now, if you've got that kind of noise occurring in your lounge room where you're trying to study, you can understand why those people are concerned. And this has been going on for as long as I've been on council and that's 10 years. So to say that we shouldn't do that, that there's something special, they're not really special. They're just being abused by people who think they can get away with it.
I'm completely in favour of what's being proposed here. The issue I have is that it sounds like the whole suburb is going to be patrolled. That's the way that sentence is written. Now, I could, I could be misinterpreting it, but I agree, we need to sort out Black Mouskett Park. The people that live within the vicinity there are getting a raw deal. Let's, let's, you know, let's try and resolve it. But should the, should, should we use ratepayers' money to have a private security force patrol the whole suburb? I don't think so. Now, I could be wrong.
So councillor, if I can just provide clarification, by precinct, the staff mean that the park's precinct, not the whole suburb?
Okay, then I withdraw.
Thank you.
With egg on my face.
It was, it was my error councillor.
Well, you haven't got smoke on it, so that's good. Okay then, moving along, the next item is in councillor Hagerty's name on page 217.
I eagerly await an answer.
Okay, next item is councillor Chitty on page 218, which is also waiting for the answer. On page 219, councillor Hall.
Sorry, yes madam, I think we've probably covered that with QWN4.
Yep.
Yes, I think we did.
I think it's done. And there's a response coming, yep. All right, thank you. The next item is CorpO2, it's your Neuradendum booklet and it's on page 3. I've got it here now. On page 3 of this particular booklet, everybody. I think.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon, any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against the cleric carried. The next item is on page 13 of the same booklet.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? I'll put it those in favour, those against the cleric carried. I haven't got a presentation, but I have got a bit of information which some of you who may be cricket fans might be interested in. I did a coin toss the other day at the international over 50s cricket match between Pakistan and England at Rosedale Oval. And they wanted to compliment council on Rosedale Oval and just what a wonderful venue it was. I don't know who won, but I suspect it was England. Okay, so a little bit of news there.
I, I did the first game, which was between South Africa and Wales.
At Rosedale?
At Rosedale.
Okay.
And it was an honour to toss the coin in the first ever over 50s World Cup match, something I will tell my grandkids about. And can I also compliment council staff on the condition of Rosedale Oval? It is fantastic nick, so.
Yeah, it was, they were very impressed, very impressed.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Am I able to move a motion now from the floor? It's just regarding high achievers that live locally in the HSC. It's come to my attention that a local resident has actually topped the state in PDHPE, which I think is a wonderful achievement. And I was hoping we could recognise other high achievers and award them in the February council meeting, if possible.
First of all, I would suggest you create an urgency motion, which I would in this situation because of the way high school certificate thing happens. I would suggest, yes, I would go along with that. And your motion would be that possibly that council looks at ways of acknowledging high achievers in the high school certificate. Because I think councillors, the staff need a bit of time to get their head around it. But that particular person who came top of the state, we could probably write to them and congratulate them.
Happy to second that motion.
Okay.
Does council in the past, have they ever, you know, given awards for high achievers or anything like that? I mean, here in the council chambers at the beginning of the meeting?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
We could get them to sing the national anthem.
Councillors, we do do a ceremony where we recognise members of the public who have been honoured, for example, through the Queen's Honours, Queen's Birthday Honours or so on. We, I don't believe we've picked up HSC students in the past in that. There's no reason why we couldn't, but we could do this much faster via this urgency motion. Because that event occurs significantly later in the year.
Okay, and could we also add that for the February council meeting, that these high achievers be congratulated on the floor of council and actually acknowledged, please?
If we can do that.
Okay.
I think the difficulty is finding them all because you don't want to miss any.
Oh, they'll be in the papers.
Yeah, I, yeah, I accept that, but also sometimes because people do get home schooled as well. So you might miss people, you just don't want to miss anybody, that's the main thing. But we will try our best. Now, we can, people are happy to support that?
Thank you.
I'll put it, that emergency motion has been moved and seconded and adopted. Thank you. All right, notices of motion, page 221 in your normal book. And it's moved by councillor Chitty, who's not here, but would someone like to move that in his absence?
I'll move that way, Madam Mayor. I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Certainly.
What's the legal implications with this? Like normally when it is a fence that is a bordering fence on property, both the property owners share the cost. Is that the same way with council in this instance or? And the other question that I have got would be, because there was no fence there when the original lease was negotiated, does that have any implications?
Councillor, can, I'll, I'll come back to your first question in a second regarding the legal implications. I might just get Chris, Mr White, to look at it. Can I just advise councillors that council staff's recommendation is that the construction of a fence is not actually feasible? And that it would require, if you look on page 3 of your Noms, and that there are other design amendments that may be able to achieve the same outcome. I'll just hand to Mr Moore to expand on that.
Thank you, through the CEO. Yes, with the development proposal, which you can see in the image on page, it's page 2 for me, though I have a lift out, okay. You can see that the car parking we're talking about is right in the middle of a development site. So a proposed, a site subject to a proposed development, I should say. And the arrangements for vehicle movements pass through that public car parking area. So a defence that would render that development proposal, you know, unachievable. And therefore, our suggestion is that there is a better way to achieve the same outcome through regulation of those car spaces by requiring that they're limited in time to one hour or two hour. Preventing, you know, long term parking, preventing residents from parking in it. We have the support of the proponent of the development to take that course of action. And it would avoid the need for a fence to achieve that outcome. And as I say, a fence would prevent that development, development outcome proposed in that drawing.
Another question, are there similar car parks that council has with a similar lease arrangement with similar parking sites?
No, that's, that's the only car park to my knowledge, Mr Morgan, that has a 99 year lease on it.
Chris, CEO, as I'm aware, that's the only one that exists, but we have to clarify, we have to come back and clarify.
The.
Yes councillor Rhodes.
The final question would be, is council then with our car parking people that go out and check, are they going to be checking on this car park? And is that an additional cost to council to be able to police it?
Through the CEO, yes, they will know, it won't be an additional cost. They can simply include that in their rostering of parking areas to be enforced. And, you know, those sorts of, those sorts of operational matters can be absorbed within existing budgets.
But it would mean that it, that's additional time that ratepayers are paying for, for council staff to police it, is what I'm getting at.
It would, it would be marginal, but yes, your, your argument is correct. If any, any additional thing that we police, you'd have to adjust the rosters to be able to manage that.
Question if I may, through you, Madam Mayor.
Yes councillor.
Mr Morgan or Mr Moore, the, as you read the motion, who is likely to be up for the cost of the initial construction of the fence? Is it going to fall on council's shoulders or the, the landowner? Or it just can't be determined?
It's more, yep.
Well, if, if a fence were to be constructed, I don't think the proponent of this development would be supportive of that at all because they, you know, for the reasons I mentioned earlier. My understanding of the Dividing Fences Act is it says in simple terms, sort it out between yourselves, which always translates to, let's go 50 50. So, but, but I think there would be the problem in the first instance that entering the land to construct a fence would be an issue because the owner of that land would not support that approach.
Given that that's the case, how much utility is there in directing the CEO to negotiate if it's between dividing landowners in any event, adjacent landowners in any event?
Through the CEO, we have, we have had those negotiations through the development assessment process. And they've concluded that there is not a willingness to construct a fence here. And the preferred option is to achieve the same outcome with regulations.
So I'm understanding this motion asks you to do what you said you've already done unsuccessfully.
Basically, yes.
Can we propose a motion that is up to date with where we're at with then, which would be?
My suggestion would be to vote against the motion and then council can start the process fresh. That would be the way to manage it, not try to cobble together.
Could we defer it?
Not to cobble together some.
I'm just thinking of my, my, my friend and colleague councillor Chitty. It is his motion and it'd be very nice to gut it.
I don't know whether we can do that.
It's been formally moved and seconded councillor, it's a formal motion. He can put in a rescission motion and I'm sure if he is here tonight, I'm happy to discuss it with him.
Okay. Chair, if I may?
Yes, certainly councillor.
Just want to know if the same outcome can be achieved just through signage?
Well, my suggestion would be then to change the motion so that you actually said the CEO negotiate with the owners of the car park with the view to limit local resident parking from nearby and leave that whole bit out. And that way you give people scope.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, happy to move that motion.
Thank you. Well, councillor Kellyanne and councillor Ad, do you have to take that on board? It just takes it up to that next level, so we don't have to. All right, so that becomes a motion. I'm going to put it those in favour, those against the cleric carried. Next item is on page, we've done that one, sorry. Next one's 225. Councillor Hagerty.
Move that way.
Thank you, seconded. Thank you councillor Kinnear. Any discussion?
I have questions.
Yes councillor.
Just let me catch up.
That's all right. Page 225 in the normal book.
Yes, Madam Mayor. In favour of the motion of course, but in, in light of councillor Hagerty's comments before about Mouskett Park, this is another example where we can use the same sort of reasoning. Because we have a great deal of problems with different things that are being done through the planning process at the moment. And I congratulate Hagerty on this motion because it is a very good motion. But in light of what he was just saying to councillor Hall's motion about Mouskett Park, I think this is another good motion where we can also consider similar motions, say for the Moorbank area, where I believe is it Melanie Gibbons, the member of Holsworthy, has already made a submission to the state government asking to change legislation to admit council the opportunity to stop processing DAs in the Moorbank area until the LEAP is revised, revision is completed. I think that's another good.
Applications, not DAs.
Yes, zoning, thank you very much councillor.
Okay.
And so all I'm saying is at the same time, we also have a, a, put in a similar motion to support the call for changes to the legislation to cease further processing of development applications Moorbank until the LEAP is revised by council and send a letter of support.
No, I'm sorry, I'm going to rule it out of order, please councillor. It's a separate motion and it's got nothing to do with this one, nice try to sneak it in.
Okay, then number three in the, in the existing one, if you will give me the time, is number three, write to the state member of Liverpool, Paul Lynch, requesting his support to advocate to the state government in opposition to this amendment.
I would just like to point out that this town centre is not in the seat of Liverpool.
It's Anna Lake Shanty Fong's electorate.
Wrong, wrong minister.
Okay, we'll write to that minister.
Won't make any difference if you write to the current, the state member. Okay, so I don't think you're moving second, I'm going to get on board with that one, pardon the pun about trains. Okay, any, you wish to speak to your motion councillor?
Yes. Don't know what this has got to do with Black Mouskett Park.
Keep going councillor, move on.
Okay, yeah, look, essentially, again, we have before us a development or an application where there is an application to go well above what the community's appetite is for this kind of development. It seems to be a pattern where you put it, you know, you have approval for X amount or you get, you put in a DA for X amount or a planning proposal for X amount. And then you come back a few years and go, oh, we want some more. The community are quite clear, they don't want this, they don't need this. This is again, an. Um, this is, again, as, similar to Middleton Grange, this is an area that, uh, still is waiting for parks, still is waiting for public schools, still is waiting for roads, footpaths to be connected, and we're throwing more people in. Um, so, not only are we doing that, uh, there is a proposal here to take two and a half hectares of green, or land, that is supposed to be for open space and public purpose, uh, purposes and developing it. Again, this is an area that is crying out for parks and green space, and, uh, the department or Landcom is proposing to take it off the Office of Strategic Lands, uh, who supposedly, if you go to their website, this, this, their, uh, their purpose is to, um, support the government's strategic plan for open space and land for public purposes. Uh, if they agree to this, um, they're, they're, they're really not doing a good job of, uh, what they're set up to do. Uh, the other issue is the, while there is, I believe, a private school opened in Edmondson Park earlier this year, and there's some land for another one ready to go, uh, there's some land earmarked, uh, eight hectares for a public, uh, primary and high school, um, but this proposal seeks to take it down to about two hectares and put residential on, uh, that, some bits of the other six. Um, what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm assuming here is that we're going to have one of these vertical campuses, you know, um, I might be, I might be old school, but, uh, I think it's important that kids have a, a playground to run around and are able to kick a ball, um, on school grounds. So I think, I take issue with that particular, um, part of the proposal. Um, and the other one is just around safety, reducing the bushfire protection zone from 50 metres to 15 metres. Um, we've seen with, uh, climate change, some of us believe in it, some of us don't, um, that we are having more frequent and more intense bushfires. I know that this area has quite a bit of green space, there's a, uh, regional or a state park quite, you know, that basically connects up to this. If that was to dry out and go up, um, and I live near it, I'd want 50 metres of bushfire protection zone, not 15. Um, and, you know, we, as councillors, this is in our area, we have a responsibility to look after the safety of our residents, and, and that's what this is about. Um, they're the main issues I, I take with it, and, and again, it's about supporting local residents and, uh, listening to their concerns. Um, we are, we, as far as I understand, and you can correct me, but we do not have, we're not, we're not at risk of, uh, not meeting our housing targets, we do not need an additional, do the sums, couple thousand, um, dwellings.
Okay, thank you councillor, I'm going to put the motion, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. The next item is, um, the endorsement of the access committee, which is confidential items, page 788.
Move that way.
Thank you, seconded. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item is on Woodward Park Master Plan, 792. Which I'm trying to find, there it is.
Move that way.
Thank you, seconded, thank you councillor Hall, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. The next item is on page 812, thank you councillor Hall, seconded. Councillor Rhodes, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item's on page 818.
Move that way.
Um, seconded, thank you councillor Hall, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item's on page 822, thank you councillor Hall. Seconded councillor Sheldon, just for change.
I have a question, if I may.
Uh, question, yes councillor.
The land that is being purchased there, it's a huge amount of land, and, um, does council own any of the other land at this particular stage? Or is this the first acquisition that they're making to that land?
Mr Otter, yeah?
Through the CEO, this is the first, uh, of the, uh, five or six lots that are required to construct a basin.
Okay, constructing a basin, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item's on page 827.
Move that way, thank you.
Thank you councillor Sheldon, seconded councillor Caliander, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric unanimous, for the typist. Next item's on page 837.
Move that way.
Thank you, moved in several places, moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Sheldon, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item's on, um, page three, that's just to be really tricky, in the other confidential book. The addendum, sorry. Confidential addendum, do you really want to make this fun, don't you? Oh, here we go. Calling for a motion. That's not it.
Move that way.
Thank you so much councillor Hagerty, seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander.
I've just got a couple of questions.
Certainly, question?
Um, I understand from the briefing, uh, session that we had on this particular issue, um, that it's not only just a fact that we have got a conventional car park which is being designed here, I did suggest start, uh, stacked parking, which would enable a smaller footprint with a larger volume of cars. The smaller footprint would be one-third of the conventional car park there. I know the council said that, um, the advice that they got was that it was far too expensive, um, except that the advice that they got was from a person who was never engaged in stacked parking here in Australia, which is understandably, because it is reasonably new. But I'd like to point out that, um, this will be the future of parking. China has got the cost of stacked parking down to $2,200 per space in American dollars, and I feel that, um, the matter of parking is going to be made cheaper once we start engaging with stacked parking. And I feel that council hasn't, uh, really engaged in the areas to find the best answers in regard to this, this issue. Um, in view of everything though, I have to, uh, sort of say that it's not the matter of us having the car, 500 car parks in there, but also the matter of that, um, we're not really doing what we tried to do with the civic place in the first place.
This is the longest question I've ever heard councillor.
Okay, the, the question is, why originally we wanted to have a bookend like the West, Westfields at the southern end of the CBD, and that, the, the northern end, the northern end has 2,000 car parks and we, we, we can't even manage 500. I wonder if we really did pick the best position for this, or why wasn't it discovered earlier that we were going to have an issue with trying to get cars into and out of this particular site?
So your question, uh...
Why was it that we didn't discover earlier that we were going to have...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, councillor, there are multiple elements that impact on how many car parking spaces a site can have. Um, the Westfield site, as you referred to, it has multiple different entry and exit points and across a number of roads, and it's a significantly bigger site in scale. In answer to your question, why didn't we discover this, um, the proposal for the last two and a half years up to the last council meeting was for 300 parking spaces, we've never shifted or changed from that. So, sorry, council spots with an additional 160 in the, um, in the developer works. So as far as council staff have been aware, up to the last council meeting, we were intended to provide 460 parking spaces across the quantum of the site. Um, so to answer your question, um, why didn't we know, it's because no one ever asked the question up to recently, you asked the question, could we get an additional 200 parking spaces on it? Um, the staff, as, as you will have heard at the briefing, have said, with, with only a single exit and with the signalisation and the nature of the road on Scott Street, uh, to add an additional 200 on top of the 460 that is the quantum of that site would not be acceptable.
And why is it that, uh, I've been speaking about stacked pack, parking, uh, well before I became a councillor, why is it that it wasn't taken into consideration from the beginning? Uh, it was suggested at the very beginning briefing of this that I was involved in.
Um, councillor, we, we have been looking at stacked parking since the beginning briefing. Um, uh, Mr Morgan, can you, uh, speak a little bit further about that, but I know that you've been in discussions with car stacker, uh, developers, owners, I'm not even sure what word I use in reference to that, um, for quite some time, are you able to elaborate on that?
Yeah, through, through the CEO, um, one particular thing on this site, um, particularly with regards to providing the car stackers, is the shape of the site. It is not a regular sh- shaped site. If it was a regular shaped site, it would be a lot more efficient, um, a, a square site with more than one entry would work. It was never going to be an opportunity to incorporate within this, within this particular development efficiently.
Um, a question, a further question to that then, is that because of the foundations that would interfere with a rectangular stacked parking placed beneath the, the, the building? Is that the reason why it does, it isn't a conventional shape, of course, but the idea about stacked parking is that they are rectangles or squares, you are right, count, uh, um, you are right in that aspect, Mr Moore. Um, but there is no reason why you couldn't fit, um, the number of cars or more in that space if we could get them in and out, and why is it that we can't? We've never seen the, um, the RMS, um, CBD car, um, traffic planning that I am aware of, and we have to address these issues, we can't just ignore them. I, I think that to be providing this is wonderful because it will be an iconic building, but I just question that we're not doing the best job for our rate, ratepayers.
Okay, well I take on board the, the, the question, inverted commas, uh, we need to move into a seconda.
Just if I can...
Hold on a moment, councillor Hagerty, are you moving?
I've moved it, haven't I?
No.
Yeah. I was, I was going to move that the motion be put.
Yeah, okay, councillor, what he, councillor did had his light on just before you did that, so, yes councillor.
Uh, thanks Madam Mayor. Well, I have to disagree with my colleagues, councillor Oates, in regard of stacking, uh, parking. It, it's approved, it's very costly. I don't believe the council can, can spend like $100,000 per one car spot. One car spot, $100,000, it's very, very expensive. The other alternative is as simple as that, to solve the traffic, uh, to solve the parking issue at the southern end of the, the CBD, to start putting a plan in regard of peri-terminus or, or Bussers Street terminus street, start putting a plan to solve this issue. But to spend $100,000 per one car space, like, it's unbelievable, we, we cannot afford that. So can I suggest that, Madam Mayor, on the recommendation number two, direct the CEO to explore the possibility of additional public parking spaces at alternative parking sites such as the Whitleham Leisure Centre, peri-street, Bussers Street, can I add to it?
Yep.
Thank you.
We can add that.
And can I add an additional point to it, that council continues to look at, because I disagree with my fellow councillor, that that is the cost of stacked parking, $2,200 currently supplied on the internet. Put it into a shopping cart.
I have a question, are we allowed to have Chinese labour standards in Liverpool?
No, we're not, but that's not...
This, this is to import into Australia.
Councillors, you've been...
Can I put in a point for...
Councillor, can you let me speak, I'm chairing this, not you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
Yes councillor.
I'm quite offended with councillor Hagerty's comment.
I think what he's referring to is that in China, things do operate differently, but that's not the issue here. Councillor, you have to get the, uh, agreement of the mover and second to have your points put in, and that's what I was trying to do. Now councillor Hagerty and councillor Caliander, are you happy to take on board what councillor did as offering to add to your motion?
Can I please clarify what that actually is about, Madam?
It's additional parking at those particular locations. Which is part of the strategy already. Now...
Yes.
Are you happy to now take on board continuous further investigation to stacked parking?
Yep, as I understand it, that's covered by existing resolutions at council, so, yeah.
I'm just checking.
Yes.
Thank you, all right, I'm going to close debate, I'm going to put the motion, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. On page 12, you have your next op, next motion.
Move that way, thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon.
I'll second.
Seconded councillor.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander, any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Now we have to go back to EGR 02, which councillor Hagerty wished to contemplate on.
Um, are we, uh, have we read our emails?
Councillor, Mr White's happy to make a point.
Um, so, uh, Mr White advises that to discuss the matter would probably be wise for council to go into closed session.
Yeah, I move that we go into closed session.
On the grounds of, uh, legal and professional advice.
I'll second that, thank you Madam Mayor.
Seconded, uh, we are going to close session at this point, I applaud, merry Christmas to all of those in the audience who may not come back.
Can we have a five minutes of break, please?
Can we have a five minutes of bracket, please?